Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the regular Town Council meeting on Wednesday, May 15 in the green room. I invite you to stand for the pledge, which Mike will lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike.
Here's Chris.
Item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors who wish to be heard? Yes? Please tell us your name.
My name is Diana Frodoizino. Some of you know me as an educator, former educator in town, but tonight I'm here as the secretary of the Boulder Lake Tax District. The Boulder Lake Tax District, we're a voluntary group. Our main course of action in life has been to maintain the Boulder Lake, keep the dam safe, protect the environment in that area. We're 91, we're made up of 91 pieces of property. We are all voters in the town. We're all taxpayers in the town. And I think I voted for every single one of you that's here. Okay. So I am the secretary, so I am the person who has sent you correspondence from the Boulder Lake Tax District. We're not here for answers. We just want to be here to let you know that we really put our heart and soul into letters that we write to you. And we would like to be acknowledged, one way or the other, from the Town Council, to, one way or the other, just say, yes, we received your letters. You want to meet with us, you don't want to meet with us, you can't talk to us, whatever that might be. And that's really the only thing I'm saying tonight. We just wanted you to see us. We're real people, you know, and normally sometimes you just get these letters and you don't know who we are. But we're just volunteers trying to do the best we can, and that's it. So I don't have anything else to say.
Item number two, the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm her husband, Gene Avino. I just want to make sure that we did send the, we did send this paperwork into all of the members of the Town Council, and we'd like to know if everybody did receive those. If anyone didn't receive them, let us know, and we'll send you another copy.
You sent it to the town email address.
I'm sorry?
You sent it to the town email.
Yes, yes. I'm the secretary, so I send it to the Town Council, so you should all have it, you know, and hopefully you all read it, but we don't have a clue if you ever even talked about it, so.
What's our normal response, Mary? How do we, don't these normally come to you and then you distribute to us?
Normally go to the town manager, that person. So we'll, we'll make sure we acknowledge that we've received it next time. Absolutely.
Right. I mean, we, we sent it recently in December, and we never received anything, but we knew you were all busy. Life was transitioning, okay. And then we sent it again, and we want to just be acknowledged that you received it. If you can't, if you can't, we said we would meet with people. If you can't do that, can you just let us know? I mean, you know, we're just kind of waiting to hear one way, one way or the other from the group. I mean, you are our last bet. I mean, you are the people that we.
We're sort of looking for some kind of guidance from the Town Council, because we've gone through everything else as far as the planning and zoning and the building department. There's many of our record, many of our letters on record with the Town Council that we never get to write to anybody anymore. It just strictly goes right to the Town Council. And that's why we wrote to you, because we felt that looking at this in a humanely way, to see what was exactly happening, might elicit some kind of a response in our favor, or at least let us know what the town thinks about this. So that's pretty much why we're here tonight, to let you know that we are a group. We're not just a name on a piece of paper.
Sounds like a response is a fair request, and we should be able to meet that request to respond, right?
Okay. Thank you so much.
Okay. Any other visitors? No more visitors? Okay. So I will go on to item number three, the approval of minutes for the April 3, 2024 meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number four, appointments and reappointments. We have an appointment request from Elizabeth Panett for the beautification committee until 6:30 2024. Is there a motion? This is the last seat to be appointed on the beautification committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. The next is Jane Scully Welch, and she is looking to be appointed to American 250 Advisory Committee until January 1, 2026. Hello, Jane. Would you like to speak?
No.
Okay. Okay, all right. Excellent. So we've all seen your application. Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Congratulations, Jane. Congratulations, Elizabeth. And finally, we have Nancy Meinke, who I haven't met before. Am I pronouncing your name correctly?
You are.
Fantastic. She is our eighth person seeking to be appointed to an 11-person committee, and that is American 250, the same that Jane has just been appointed to, for a period until January 1, 2026. Is there a motion for that appointment?
I'll make a motion.
All right, second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Welcome.
Motion carries. Okay. Thank you very much. Yes.
Do we have any, you know, directions as to what, what we do, I guess, when we have the first meeting?
We have been, it's been a long slog, and now we are up to eight members, but Mary and I discussed the fact that it is possible now for people to begin meeting, and Mary will get in touch with all of you, and you can determine your first meeting, you can determine your chair, and then the instruction will be given. It's a, it's a rather simple task. Well, it's not simple at all, but it's one, and that is to create an event that is suited to the town of Clinton to celebrate the 250th signing of the Declaration of Independence, and that event would take place sometime in the year 2026. It's not necessarily July the 4th.
But we'll have our own.
Instructions will be given.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, great. All right. So thank you very much. This is great. We're getting there. All right. Item number five is a tree warden update. Would that be Gary or Todd or both?
Probably be a little bit of both of us.
Okay, great.
Gary's got it.
Okay, Gary's got it. Okay. All right.
So for some of you who don't know me, I'm the tree warden for the town of Clinton. Every statue in Connecticut, every town in Connecticut has a tree warden. I'm tasked with, first and foremost, the tree risk assessment for all town trees on any of our properties or in our, right away. It's important that I come to you once a year, at least, to answer questions, give you a status, let you know kind of what we do. I have to commend the director in the last, starting with Pete Neff and continuing into Todd's tenure. The attention to the town trees is, is, we've nev, we've never paid this much attention to our town trees, at a point where it is so critical, not to bore you, but emerald ashbore, lanternfly, gypsy moth in the, in the white oaks. We're losing, beech leaf disease, we're losing trees at an alarming rate through no fault of anybody's in general. And in addition to that, we have a very mature forest. So tonight I'm coming to you because our town green is going to look a lot different in the, in the years to come. We are going to lose, we will be taking down at least one more tree this year, most likely two. One of the problems with our town green is that there's very little diversity in the, in what they planted maybe 120 years ago, and in age. So a lot of trees were planted at the same time, same species. They're at the end of their life cycle, aesthetic life cycle, and the life cycle of what it would be to be safe. Moving forward, the good news is, you know, Todd and I have a plan to be replacing these trees, it's already started a few years ago, with different species, with different ages, different types of trees, so that we have sustainability and we have a plan moving forward, balancing how much grass we have there versus trees. We still have about 10 trees on the town green that is very, very small, and we've removed almost, since I've started, maybe six or seven. So that's, that's what's happening. So I want everybody to know, and hopefully you'll support us, that these decisions do not come lightly. You know, I grew up in town, we are emotionally attached to our surroundings, especially when our surroundings are massive, right? So we're personally, we have a personal connection to these. We start with what is safe for the general public. That's always number one. And then we get down to the aesthetic value. We get down to what can Todd take care of, you know, and move forward. Over at Pearson School, we have a similar issue. We have a couple of trees there that might remedy itself with the sale of Pearson School, but while we still own it, we've got issues there. If you go through town, Eversource does a really good job liaising with me. I have a personal connection, I shouldn't say personal, I have a very good connection with, with the tree crews that come into town, and I hold them accountable for their pruning practices. By, by federal and state law, they don't really have to follow the pruning practices of a licensed arborist, but we do hold them accountable for that. And Todd can back me up that we save a lot of money in the town of Clinton, having that relationship, being able to have them be proactive, taking down some of our trees. I did just get a report about two weeks ago that the outages in Clinton have really, really gone down compared to our surrounding towns that sometimes set up roadblocks or, or don't allow certain trees to be taken down. So a lot of this is Todd's group that goes in and takes trees down, and a lot of it really is Eversource being proactive. And, and the other good news is that Eversource is replanting in some spots. They never did this. I've been here for 20 years. They never replanted trees. So, so we got a lot going on, and, you know, we've got trees all around us. I know it's not a sexy subject, but it is what it is. And if you have any questions, and I do have something else I want to talk about after this, but if you have any questions, now's the time to ask.
So Gary, thanks for the update about the town green. I would, I would say, from Town Council's point of view, at least in the past, what's most important is if there's a major thing that's happening, like the green or the library or some, you know, I don't, nothing minor, but a major thing, if you could just send us an email and let us know, so that when it becomes news and the tree falls down, that we already knew about it. Because, you know, that, that's always been a thing in the past, in that, you know, we wanted to know ahead of time, for, you know, when it becomes news.
I agree with you. And you're in a grocery store, and somebody walks up and says, hey, why was the tree removed at X, Y, Z? And you say, I don't know. It's better if you say, well, here's what's going on. We have a tree warden, and, and, you know, it was a tough issue, and it had to be done, and, and here's the follow-up. So I totally get that.
I got some questions or comments from constituents about trees on Route 1 that we have less, particularly in the downtown area. And I noticed that the power lines seem to be more significant or higher and bigger. They put new phone poles in. Is it possible to propagate or start creating more trees on some of the roads in Clinton?
It is. We actually have more trees on, on Route 1. I mean, that's so diverse, right? We actually have more trees on Route 1 than we, we had. They're smaller. I know the Red Wing Foundation planted, I think, about 30 trees. So perception is, is a big deal, right? So we, we're losing our trees. Eversource came down and planted a tree. In the last program, Eversource on the town green removed two trees, three trees and planted two. So the other thing is that we have this moratorium, and I believe rightfully so, is to not create future hazards. So I know we've been working with the town, the town tree committee to promote planting on private property away from the, the power lines, right? So yes, we want more trees on Route 1. We want our town to have a certain aesthetic value, but we don't want to do that if in 15 years, they're going to have to go prune that tree in a non-arborist way, if the tree is going to become a hazard, or, like we're seeing, the tree is going to have to be removed anyway. So we now have a town planner, working with her. We can actually plant in a way that is conducive to, to the future, instead of just saying, I have a tree, and let's put it somewhere. Does that make sense?
Yeah, very good. Thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right.
So I have one more item that's a little bit different, but I've been doing the bricks at the Liberty, what do you call it, Todd, the Liberty?
Dinner at the Park, I guess, is.
Well.
Commerce Street Green.
Commerce Street Green. So it's called Commerce Street Green, and I've been doing the veterans' bricks for a long time. And Director Hayjack and I agree that the park needs big overhaul. We don't know what that's going to look like. We're still in the planning process. It's pretty outdated. But I would like, as part, if we can go down this route, I would like the Town Council to consider renaming a veterans' park. It is definitely a place where we honor our veterans. The bricks are already there. It even sounds a little better than, you know, Commerce Street Park. So hopefully you can consider in the future, I'll send an email, so you have a formal request to rename the park. Maybe someday we could have a ribbon cutting, invite the veterans, and have a new park.
Any other questions?
Is there any marking there that designates the veterans? Like, do the bricks, are they for a specific?
There isn't, but that's a good point. Like, perhaps in the new, when we renovated, there could be, you know, we have something out front here for veterans who, you know, have fallen, but this is really for anybody who served, who has a connection to the town of Clinton. So that would, that would be, I think that would be a good item to have there, naming a veterans' park, some kind of sign. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we're, items six, seven, and eight, and I understand, Bob, you're in charge of those?
Yes, the, the first item involves a request, resolution, amending an appropriation that the Town Council did regarding the CIP 2223, and that was regarding the Shellfish Commission utility boat replacement. Back then, an amount of $22,700 was appropriated. That's in our Fund 60, which is our capital non-recurring fund for the town and the Board of Ed. Since then, well, since then, the boat has not been purchased, so that was a while ago. They're purchasing now, but the prices have gone up. So there's a need for an additional, actually, $20,267. Those funds can come from the Shellfish Commission Special Revenue Fund. There's monies there. I think there's 40-plus thousand in that fund. It's an appropriate expenditure for that fund, because the fund, the use of those proceeds that go into that fund is for the maintenance and the protection of the shellfish beds. And the Shellfish Commissioner is here to talk about the item that we're talking about here.
Okay. Shall I ask somebody from the Shellfish Commission to speak? Oh, great. All right.
Yep. So the reason why the, the increase is because COVID has really tripled the price of boats. So we did a first round bid about a year ago. We didn't get any bids back. We did another bid this year, and we did choose a boat that was the lowest bidder, but very, very appropriate for the work that we have to do.
What's the size of the boat?
It's a 19, 20-foot boat.
Does it have a motor?
Yes, it does.
Oh, what size?
It's a boat, motor, and trailer package.
And it's new?
It's new.
That seems not like, not a lot of money.
Well, it's last year's model.
What's the name brand? What, what kind of boat is it? Just?
Bull's Bed.
Bull's Bed.
Thanks.
And it's from a local marina?
Yeah, where do you keep it? Old Clinton Harbor? Sorry?
That's going to be a good question.
Oh.
So it's typically, you know, we've, we had a boat, we have a boat right now that's, that was purchased in 2007 from a grant, and it was in the town marina, still in the town marina. So we're going to be working through some things around making sure that we, we have a place to, to keep it in the future.
What are you going to do with the old boat?
Well, that's an interesting thing around, as, as Bob said, it's, it's a situation where funds for a particular, from a particular account, by state statute, is supposed to be used for shellfish. The utility boat that we have right now was used by harbor management, and it was one of those situations where we kind of let that happen. So I don't know if there's going to be interest for the town to utilize that for harbor management commission and that sort of thing. So that's, that's a loose end that we have to kind of work out.
What size is a motor?
It's a 115, I think.
On the new one?
Yeah.
Suzuki.
The old one was, was a 90.
That's all my questions.
Any other questions? All right. So we're looking for an appropriation. Is that, you would like me to read that?
The motion.
Okay, great. So reading something that we'll ask for a motion towards a resolution amending an appropriation in the CIP 2022-2023 account 604167-59419 for a Shellfish Commission sampling and utility boat replacement. The original amount approved is for $22,700. An additional appropriation of $20,267 is requested to be funded from the Shellfish Fund 41. This will bring the total appropriation amount to $42,967 for the replacement of the Shellfish Commission sampling and utility boat. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. And so, Bob? Yes?
Setting the mill rate for the budget year 2425. You have a sheet before you. The proposed mill rate was 30.26. I'm new here, so I wanted to make sure and get comfortable with that mill rate. So I almost worked backwards, and it's basically called a mill rate reasonableness test. So basically, I started out with the 2023 taxable grand list per the assessors' M13 report, which is the report that goes to the state. I applied the proposed mill rate to it, and I got a tax levy of $52,642325. And then you reduce the tax credits that was reported in the budget, and you get an adjusted tax levy of $52,211. I applied the, the tax collection rate of 98.8%, that was used in the budget before you, and that brings me to a current year taxes amount of $51,584640. Then I added back the tax credits, because in your budget presently, on the current year tax line item, it's a gross amount. Underneath is a negative budget amount. I think probably the, probably the next budget, it would just be, probably that negative amount would disappear. There'll be a mill rate calculation sheet with the tax credits on it. I think it's just easier to look at. Anyway, we add back tax credits. We get $52,015, and then I compare that to the adopted 2425 budget, and it was off, there was a difference of $4,800, which is basically rounding an amount. So very comfortable with the, the mill rate of 30.26. It's a correct amount.
So our charge is to set that mill rate for fiscal year 2024, 2025, and I will read something that we'll look for a motion toward. The Town Council hereby sets the rate of taxation on the taxable property of the town for the July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 fiscal year at 30.26 mils. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Excellent. So thank you very much, Bob, and on to the financial monthly report.
Yes. So I looked at the prior year financial reports that were submitted. I, my first time, I wanted to basically submit the same reports. They look slightly different. You know, most reports that I submit, I try to make them readable and easier to read. So we have the first report, which is on page one, is General Fund Year to Date Budget to Actual Revenue Report. You'll see it's a different format. It's a format usually that mirrors what's in the year-end financial statements. It's by function, so you have property taxes, intergovernmental revenues, charges for services, miscellaneous revenue accounts, interest on investments, and other financing sources. And that's our famous, and I call it use of fund balance. I know I've been reading, and there's a lot of, you know, cash surplus terminology. Use of fund balance is, is the equivalent. This is as of April 30, 2024. I have, at the very last column, I've estimated what I expect to see in those revenue accounts at fiscal year end. On this report, a, an ending balance, a negative ending balance is, is good. In other words, revenues exceed the budget amount. On here, I've highlighted revenue items that exceed budget, and they're really the drivers on the revenue side of the budget, namely supplemental motor vehicle tax, 170, around 170,000 above budget, the education cost sharing grant, 238,000 above budget, municipal sharing grant, where we didn't budget for. A lot of times, you don't budget for that grant, because that grant is based on state sales tax, and whatever's left, the Towns of Gaden, sometimes you don't get anything. So I guess that was prudent not to budget. Anyway, we received 333,000. And then the big item is investment income, and that's close, close to $1 million of a budget, which brings us, actually, now, we plan to use 3.3 million in fund balance. In actuality, we're going to end up only using 1.2. I mean, it's good news, you know, we budget to use fund balance. If you happen at the end of the fiscal year not to use it, it just means that you had a positive budget performance. And basically, what you do is you continue to budget to use fund balance until we get to our policy of 15%. On page two is a expenditure side of the budget, but it's, it's a one-page report, and it's just by department, to give you a quick look of what each department looks like. It starts off, the budget column is the, our financial system, when it, when it does the budget column on these reports, it's the amended budget. So it's the original budget plus any transfers in or out, and we have this amended budget amount. Incumbrance is outstanding, and year-to-date expenses and available balance. As you can see, by department, there's only one department, and that's the debt service principal amount. It's in the negative 35,000, and that relates to the boat that we leased. It's in next year's budget, but we must have done it at fiscal year end, and there's, there's an amount in this budget that wasn't budgeted for. So we'll have to take care of that probably next month in form of a transfer. Page three starts an expenditure budget by its, but it's by department, by line item. So this is really the most detail without getting into all the individual transactions. Same, same format, you know, budget, monthly, the last month's expenses, incumbents is outstanding, year-to-date expenses, and, and the available balance. Obviously, by fiscal year end. Obviously, by fiscal year-end, we'll be within budget. There are some line items in this expenditure side that will need some transfers, namely payroll accounts because contracts have been settled after the budget was approved, and people leaving, you know, there are certain payouts per contract for sick leave and vacation leave, and so that makes some salary accounts over. But there are some salary accounts that are going to have monies in it, so we'll be able to transfer amounts from those salary accounts to the other salary accounts, plus a little bit from contingency. The next report starts on page, let's see, I should just, okay, on page 12, it's just a new one, a new report. It just shows original budget versus the amended budget today. The, the transfer column, the larger amounts came through the council, and those transfers came from contingency for the most part. And then you'll see smaller transfer amounts, and those amounts are under $500, and per charter, the finance director is able to do that if it's under $500. So that's something I would probably show at fiscal year-end, and we're getting near fiscal year-end, so it's an appropriate report to show. I think maybe in the, in the next budget, we would probably end up showing this year's adopted transfers and amended column, just as additional information as you compare the current year's request to the prior year. Next report is on page 19, and that's the investment balance and interest earned. My only comment on there is, I'm just going to look into the Board of, the Bank of America Investments because of the lower interest rate compared to STIF and Liberty to see if there's any potential for more investment earnings.
What's STIF?
The State Short-Term Investment Account, so they make, they make their own rules, so they're, per state statute, I'm only allowed to invest in safe instruments, which makes sense. The state has their fund where town can make their investments, and they have different rules, and they can invest in more, I don't want to say riskier investments, but slightly more riskier, so we get a nice interest rate. The next report is page 20, and that's American Rescue Plan, which is in Fund 40. I chose to show the original budget, the accumulated expenses as of May 7th, and the various fiscal years those expenditures were expended in, and the balance. As in the narrative, I think we've chosen July 1st, or somewhere around that period, to analyze these balances, question the departments, and there are some items here that naturally you're going to have amounts left, and then you're going to have to quickly make some decisions and spend these amounts before December 31st, or at least obligate those amounts. Page 21 is the all-important fund balance analysis, starting off with our audited fund balance on June 30th, 2023. The total fund balance was $20,285,715. Of that, unassigned was $17 million, a little bit above $17 million. Assigned is the budgeted use of fund balance for the next fiscal year. So, let's see, fiscal year 2324, the one that's almost finishing in a month, I used the estimated actual expenses from that revenue analysis of $60,914. The estimated actual expenditures, I used the budget. I'm assuming we're going to spend the whole budget.
So will you update that next report?
Sure, yes, it'll be much, much closer as an actual expense. So expenditures of revenues, 1.2 million, which represents the use of fund balance. So using these amounts, the estimated fund balance on June 30th, 2024, the unassigned would be a little bit over $15 million. So the unassigned percent of budget goes from 27 down to 23. And we know our policy is 15% of total budget. You have to be very careful on the use of fund balance. Using it in the budget, there's going to become a point where you reach the 15%, and then there's going to be the big question of, how are you going to fill that gap up here? That's why we're always associating the use of fund balance, which is in the revenue portion, we're associating that with the capital items in, on the expenditure side. And we do that because if you pull at full stop on using fund balance, you've got something to pull out. I mean, it's been very nice to be able to purchase capital assets all these years, but when we have to pull on the brakes, it's those capital assets that are going to come out.
Yeah.
So it's a dilemma, because we have an account called interest income. That's produced from fund balance. It's increasing. It's that interest income that we could use to plug the loss of use of fund balance, and so, that'd be interesting. But that's one thing to keep in mind.
Yeah, the key there is to do it gradually over time, right?
Right.
Not to be shocked.
So even though we're using 3-plus-4 million in actuality, because of interest income, we're using less, and that's really, that's kind of good, that's good. So.
Yeah, we've had many discussions on fund balance, probably too much, but I think what keeps happening, I appreciate what you just said, and that's interesting, but what keeps happening is we sort of, we figure out how much we think we're going to spend, and then the interest income and other factors go into it, and we spend less. And it's not a bad problem, but we never are spending, we spend so much time and budget time talking about it and getting worried that we're getting close to 15%. And year after year, we spend less than we actually.
And that's happening in quite a few towns because of interest income. Right, so it's something to keep your eye on, and you certainly, if we, we spent this, if we actually use 4 million, and next year we use 4 million, you're going to have to put on the brakes.
Yeah.
And that's.
Yeah, I don't know if that's such a good idea.
And then how are you going to purchase your capital?
We've got to bring that down.
Again, that's a slow wave or slow curve, especially, you know, to make sure we're meeting the needs of the capital projects, we're funding appropriately but not overspend where, and, you know, when the market's not good, that we're in a worse spot than we were the year before.
Yeah.
It's a slow curve up now.
And the final report is just a report on the contingency, contingency account. And it's actually a report directly from our financial system. And actually, you could see the transfers to the town councils.
That's a nice summary, yeah.
I really, I really like these reports. They're, they're easy to read. I liked page one, you know, some new ways to look at things. Page one is interesting to me, to see that broken out like that. But this is great. I like the way you're breaking this out.
Yeah, there's, there's going to be some effort in changing the account structure in the financial accounting system, which will enable me to push a button and give you this report instantly. Right now, I can't do it, but eventually I'll be able to do that. Other things, too, you know, we have, you know, the capital nonrecurring fund, I'm sure you're interested in that, and there are some things I can do with the account structure where I can assign an actual project code, where I can match the expenses and revenues together and give you an instant report. Right now, I can't do that either, but we'll, we'll get to that. And you all, you all know about the interesting department of, what is it, General Government and General Government Other, which is a long list of line items. Sooner or later, sooner than later, I'll have a proposal to break some of those accounts out and put them into the departments where they belong. And including contingency, I'm used to having that as a department with one line item called contingency. It just makes it easier to read and to serve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I'm good.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, thank you very much.
That's great.
All right, so on to item number nine, which is a chairman's report. I just want to remind everybody that we have the meeting greet tomorrow with our two finalists in the green room at 6:00 PM. We will be providing the residents with a handout, which we will discuss later on, to make sure that that handout is suitable for everybody. You've received an email from Joe Dietrich about the Memorial Day Parade, and you know that I will not be the representative of the council. What happened was that a very long planned vacation, about a year, we've been planning as a family to vacation and celebrate my brother's successful fight with cancer, and I was to leave next week, and so I told Joe Dietrich I wasn't able to be here, and I asked Chris, and Chris said he wasn't sure he could be there all day, and so I asked Hank, and that's why Hank will be the representative. Unfortunately, I will actually be here because in March, we found out that my brother's cancer has returned.
Oh, sorry to hear that.
So I will be here, but I will not, just because my life has changed, change everybody else's. And Hank is going to be our representative, and I will enjoy the day without any attention. The Downtown Improvement Subcommittee is meeting for the third time at the end of this month with Abby. It's Hank and Chris Anisovitch and myself, and we'll be focusing specifically on blight. Abby's been doing a lot of work studying other towns and their, and their policies, and we're going to see what best suits ours. And the Communications Subcommittee has been working hard, and thanks to Mary, producing a great deal, because we rely on Mary for posting, and there's a lot that's out there now, and, and we're happy with that. And that is it for my chairman's report, and so it's on to council discussion, item number 10. Anybody have any discussion?
Did I see an email from Chris that said he got funds, Chris Anisovitch, for ARPA funds for $250,000 for the town beach?
That was, that was state money, and I read it from Norm Needleman, that 250 is going to go to the town beach to supplement the beach house project.
Okay, so that, that adds to our discussion for July.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Because now, it's a good thing, but we have more money now. And so, and, you know, it all has to still be under contract by January, so.
All right.
Yep.
Anyone else? No, all right. Any liaison reports?
We had an Economic Development Commission meeting last night, and, you know, we have a couple of different efforts that we've described, but we're having a little trouble with our, with the population, the people on the, on the Economic Development Commission. People don't attend, and we have, I think there's a rule in town, it's 65% of the meetings you need to attend, and there's members that are not meeting that, and others that have resigned. So we're going to go out and try to recruit more people to be on EDC. There's only a few active members now, and so I'll put it out there to, you know, we'll, we'll think about it, and we're going to go out and try to get some people to volunteer. But if you know anybody interested in EDC, we could use some members.
Okay. Mike, anything?
Yeah, we had a Park and Rec Commission meeting last Tuesday, I think, and some activity has been going on over the last couple of weeks with the contracts for both pickleball and bleachers. I think they're both signed now. So that's good. So with the major projects for Park and Rec, you know, the turf is, the turf's going to be closed from June 1st till August 15th, and that should be done. And then you have pickleball and bleachers that are signed. And, you know, I think the pickleball was set to go, but then, you know, we had, they had to get the contract signed, so I think that person is willing to come back. I think they're up in Cromwell or Portland on another project, and they're next in line. And then, I'm not sure of the status of the bleachers, but with a signed contract, we're in good shape there, so.
Excellent. Okay. All right, so on to.
Hi, I'm.
Sorry, Mike, sorry, sorry, Ryan.
Planning and zoning. We talked about this from, I think it was a meeting before last, but planning and zoning approved the Park and Rec Commission's application to relocate the basketball court. That was a back and forth for a little bit, but there's not going to be any new impervious surface within the 50 foot, so the title offered that was approved this past Monday. So good news there, too.
Yeah.
Very good news. Okay. All right, so now, on to item number 12, and that is a motion is needed to go into executive session and invite Mary and Richard and Carl.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
So on to item number 13, a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks.